Good evening, everyone.
I always have it written down.
Dan Larson speaking. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting tonight, Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. I called the meeting to order, and I asked if we please all stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Our next section would be additions or changes to the agenda. Are there any suggestions or desires for any changes? Desires for any changes?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure the Board of Selectmen know we sent out an updated or amended agenda. I want to make sure everybody's working off the latest one. If not, they can follow the one on the screen.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, I am, actually.
And, Mr. Chairman, could you just do a roll call of the board so we know?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, myself, Dan Larson, it's here. I see Mr. Collins is here. Kayla Richmond is here.
Here.
Peter Casper is here. Is Mark Ribera on? Mark Ribera? I don't hear Mark, so I know he was going to attempt to call in. So at this time, we have four of our five members. Our next section is our public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. The board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type "comment" and your name in the chat box, and you will be recognized. And I'm going to please ask that Donna be the timekeeper for this. Would that be acceptable, Donna?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
The first person who would like to public comment is Mr. Kevin Tullamary. Kevin?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen. I did submit a letter for the record to the email of the Board of Selectmen. It was later this afternoon, so I hope you can take a moment and read that. And I know we will be getting back more deeply into the discussion of the Public Works Facility at 17 Kinney Road. And again, as you know, I'd like to voice my opposition to that proposed plan based on the conflicts with the Plan of Conservation and Development. My letter outlined a number of those sections of the plan, and I'd like to just highlight a few right now. On page 23, Section 2, Part 8, titled Sustainability, the introduction reads, "Hebron has a long history of caring for its environment and preserving those aspects that make it a special place. Its sustainable community is one designed with consideration of its environmental impact. Planning for sustainability promotes responsible development." It is not anti-development. And I just end quote. And I'd like to say that I am not anti-development and that I certainly support the need to follow through with a new public works facility and understand that their current facility, I just solely feel that this is the wrong location. The impact on the residential and historic neighborhood would be too great and too detrimental. On page 26, the goal of the Sustainability section clearly states to grow the community in a manner that is close to sustainable, is practical, given its small town and rural character, and to achieve a minimal impact on the environment from land development, energy use, waste and recycling practices, and other human activities. On page 29, the goal of Part B, Underground Drinking Water Supplies, is again clearly stated, quote, "preservation and protection of Hebron's finite groundwater resources and their recharge area. The land at 17 Kinney Road is an ancient and indispensable, quote, recharge area, working effortlessly to filter rainwater and guide it directly into the Raymond Brook Marsh, our most important aquifer." I recently posted some videos on our Facebook page, Kinney Road Cares, and I would encourage you all to go take a look at that. It shows the rain flow runoff during Tropical Storm Henri and following our recent Tropical Storm Ida. And certainly, the Public Works Department will be familiar with the quality and quantity of runoff coming to that corner of Kinney Road and Church Street because our culvert washed out last night and is in need of serious repair. So there's other areas of the Plan of Conservation and Development that are also related to the historic nature of the town. The goal of Part H is a firm directive to the town to protect the aesthetic, natural, and cultural viewpoints and road design that provides opportunities as scenic vistas and rural streetscapes. Kinney Road and the area that surrounds 17 Kinney Road is perhaps the most historic and unspoiled location in all of Hebron. These are the--
Please wrap up your comments.
Excuse me?
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay, thank you very much. These are the same fields that our town fathers began working in 1704. They were a gift to the original proprietors from the Mohegan Sacrum Adawanhood in gratitude for companionship during King Philip's War of 1675. To use this location as an industrial public works facility would be unfathomable. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I do appreciate the effort that the Board of Selectmen and Public Building Committee has put into this, but I do consider this to be a bad option. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize that Selectman Ribera has arrived for the record.
Thank you. Kaitlin Hershey is the next public comment. Go ahead, Kate.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I just wanted to hop on here quickly to let you guys know the timing of this meeting was actually perfect with the storm, with Ida coming through. I just wanted to publicly thank the Public Works Department. You know, I think most people had seen in the last storm, I had my house written about from all the flooding and the work that the fire department and Public Works put into our property. Again, I reached out to Public Works this morning. I live over on Millstream, and, you know, we had entire portions of our driveway washed away. The road came, you know, the water came up over the road again. I mean, it took entire chunks of asphalt out. It was pretty messy down here this morning. And again, I reached out to Public Works, and within, you know, it felt like moments, but it was probably about an hour, there was an entire crew at the bottom of my driveway repairing everything. And I just really want to extend my gratitude and let you guys know that I really appreciate the work that they do for us, and I'm really thankful for, you know, Kevin Kelly and his team and just kind of the speed at which they fixed and brought materials and helped my neighbors. I'm just really absolutely thankful for that. So I just wanted to hop on here and mention that to you guys.
Thank you.
And next public comment is from Mark Stewart. Go ahead, Mark.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to address the Board of Selectmen. It's almost like old times. So I want to particularly address the board with regards to the proposed Public Works Facility. And we don't need a lot of history on this because I know you're all aware of it, but this is a project and process that's been in the works for 11 years. There has been many opportunities for our comments with regards to property selection. And you know that there were numerous properties identified, evaluated, and the selection process eventually windowed down the location to the currently proposed location. That generated a proposal to purchase the 89 acres of the Horton property with a specific purpose to build the Public Works Facility. It was never an unknown decision. The Board of Selectmen supported that purchase unanimously. There were no objections, and every member of the board knew that the underlying plan was the eventual location, the probable eventual location of the Public Works Facility on that property. What concerns me here is that Hebron has a long history of citizen involvement in decision-making. The Boards of Selectmen, Planning, Zoning, Recreation have all relied on citizens to volunteer their time and efforts to help the board to make reasonably thought-out, logical decisions to support the community responsibly. For the last four years, the Board of Selectmen has begun to deviate from that and become more insular and has, well, has taken a tact or track under pressure from one selectman in particular to degrade citizen involvement and bring all decision-making back to the board. So this started with the Capital Improvement Committee, which has been removed and citizen participation eliminated. The Board of Selectmen, after doing that, decided to ignore recommendations of the Volunteer Charter Revision Commission and override those decisions with its own agenda. And now we see that we're here again with the board under the sway of one particular selectman, challenging the work for 11 years because one person thinks they know better than everybody else. And that's very concerning. So I would say that, A, I support the location of the Public Works Facility in the selected location. There are no endangered species identified by the Department of Environmental Protection on this property. As for the historical nature of the property, you are going to be hard pressed to find any location in the town of Hebron that does not have some type of historical significance. If we were going to keep Hebron the same as it was 100 years ago, we'd have to do a lot of rethinking about what's in this town and begin to tear it down. So I'd like the board to do the following, or I suggest the following recommendations to the board. Hey, take a vote. Stop putting this off. Please vote. If the board is unwilling to make that decision, then send it to the citizens. Schedule a referendum, not a town meeting that can be easily manipulated with just 25 votes, but schedule a referendum and let the whole town vote on this, and we can get that out of the way, and the citizens can make the decision.
Please wrap up your comments, Mr. Stewart.
With pleasure. Another option that you have is to leave the Public Works Facility in the current location, try to rebuild it to modern standards, but that will degrade the ability of the Public Works Department to provide extensive services to the town in the future. I really appreciate the time that you allowed me to make comments, and I wish you the best of luck in your decision-making. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next public comment is from Michelle Hannan. Michelle?
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, everyone, for having me today and for having the meeting. I'm here also to oppose the development on Kinney Road. I certainly agree that the public works should be a safe environment for all the employees who work there, as I want to go to work safely every day. But I truly believe the proposed location on Kinney is not appropriate. It was made very clear to me when I moved here, which is why I moved here, and even in last week's meeting, that our town really does care deeply about the environment. It cares about our history and it cares about the families in town, especially based on last week's discussion, excuse me, discussion, rather, of masks in schools for the safety of our students that really hit home to me. And I felt like, wow, we really do care about families. We really do care about people in the town. And even following discussion regarding solar panels. So it does seem like we care about the climate, we care about the environment, but it seems like the consideration of this property goes against many of those ideals, and it seems almost hypocritical. So I truly do hope that we reconsider the location, especially in the last two weeks and even within the last two years. These last two storms and the current damage just show that the location is constantly wet, it's constantly flooding. The Public Works did a great job fixing our road today, but guess what? That happened less than a month ago. This is the second time it's gotten washed out because of the water, which is super concerning, obviously, for the safety of the road and for those people who have a well. What's happening with that water, especially if there's going to be a salt shed there or other development? We seem to agree in our town that climate change is real, and that means that this water is going to continue coming, and these crazy storms are continuing to happen. I'm also asking today that for those involved making this decision, really show empathy and consider the idea of this development coming into your own neighborhood. What would you do if you were considering having a salt shed that could potentially contaminate your water or have a lot of development that could, you know, ruin the beautiful, serene neighborhood that you purchased a property in for that reason? So really, I'm asking for empathy and really hoping that you consider my ideas. Thank you so much for having me tonight.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Mary Rose Mead.
Good evening. Hi. I live at 109 Church Street, which is the corner of Kinney and Route 85. We lived here for 29 years. I'm not necessarily opposed to the project, but I have legitimate concerns that are actually practical concerns that I'm not 100% sure have been considered. One is related to groundwater and runoff. Anything that happens there is going to go into wells and flow right down into ours. We actually have an easement on the property behind us that would block the development, and we have a well, we have an easement to a well here. It's something that has to be considered. The other thing that is really concerning, and I made a call to Town Hall about this yesterday, about 12 years ago, there was a proposal to develop that property and put some housing there, and again, to take a road out to Kinney and to put a light at the corner of Kinney and Route 85. At that time when they made up the plans, they weren't paying attention to property lines, and they knew that they would need to widen the road. In order to put a light up, it was required to widen the road. In order to widen the road, they wanted to grant a further easement onto our property by the electric company. We're in a 200-year-old home. We're about 15 feet from the road. We're on wetlands. Our house would have never been able to be built here now, but we're not willing to grant an easement so that a light can go in there. We have people that come off the road already onto our property. Having any kind of an easement to any electric company or to widen the road, we're not willing to do that, and we would fight it. So I'm not saying I want to throw, you know, something, a wrench into the wheels of progress, but we haven't been approached about that, and yet there's a plan that's talking about putting a light there for which the last time they wanted to do that required widening the road over here. So my hope is two things. Number one, that you're really looking at all the effects of the proposed plan. And the other thing I'm going to ask everyone to think about, because this may be the best site, but maybe rethinking the egress, because taking such a number of vehicles out into a residential street that's very narrow also, and it's quiet, and as people walk there, people are walking in the Raymond Brook Preserve, consider maybe altering those plans a bit. I know it might cost more money, but if we can do something to bring an egress out to 85 or to maybe bring it to Millstream or out John Horton and not have a second, we may need to think about, to address the issue so that there is a feeling of safety and that it's actually feasible. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you so much for your service to the town of Hebron.
Thank you. And our next public speaker is Rourke the Cormick. Rourke?
Hello, Board of Selectmen. Thank you for letting me speak at this meeting. I'm opposed to the development on Kinney Road. I just purchased my home on 78 Kinney Road about a month ago, and I really like the neighborhood and the environment that it's in. I just finished getting a bunch of water out of my basement, which flooded because of the storm, so I can't see how turning wetlands into any type of developed structure would improve the water situation in this area. As other comments have mentioned, the freak weather events are going to become more and more common as the climate change intensifies. So I do appreciate all the work that the Public Works Department has done, but I cannot support having a large facility across the street from my house. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, we have Greg Shoretale. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Donna. Greg Shoretale, 22 Kinney Road. When the referendum was in play to purchase this property, my wife and I and several of the other neighbors were opposed to that purchase for a lot of the reasons that are being mentioned tonight. And we still do oppose the construction of the facility here on Kinney Road for those reasons. This is a very narrow country road. There's severely deep swales on either side of the road, which carry water down the sides of the road to the brook. I can't see how we feel, the town feels, this road can support the amount of traffic that this new facility would create on this road. The town just has made a huge investment in expanding the walking trails behind us, which has been a great investment. We've seen a huge increase in the amount of walkers and people just enjoying those trails and enjoying the walk up and down Kinney Road to get to those trails. And to me, it would be very counterproductive to pull the Public Works Facility on this road. Believe me, I feel that every worker is entitled to a safe and healthy work environment, and I think that could be accomplished at the current complex on Old Colchester Road if we just put our minds to it. So I just wanted to raise this concern again, along with the fact that the construction of this facility, I have to imagine with the increases that, you know, everyone has seen in construction prices, that by the time it comes time to build this facility, the costs are going to be astronomical for that, as well as, you know, what is going to go on this parcel or within the facility, such as the salt shed? That's a huge concern for everyone in this area, being so close to the Hebron watershed. A lot of us have very shallow wells, and the salt contamination that's, you know, could occur from that facility is really concerning. So thank you for your time. Thank you for the council's time and effort to pull this plan together, but I really think we should rethink putting it there and consider other locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. If there is anyone else who has a public comment, if you could please jot your name in the chat box, and we will recognize you, and there is another opportunity at the end of the meeting for public comment. I have one letter here that was sent in with the request that we read it into the record, and this is addressed to the Board of Selectmen. It is from Clara O'Brien. I am Hebron resident who was a member of the Board of Selectmen when the decision was made to purchase the Horton property. Although no formal vote was taken, my intent was that this property would be utilized to build a new municipal complex. At the town meeting that was held to purchase this land in March of 2019, it was clearly stated that this parcel would be the location of the new Public Works Facility as part of the proposed future municipal complex. This parcel was unanimously approved by all of the Hebron's Land Use Boards and Commissions. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously that locating the DPW Town Offices and the Company Number One Firehouse and a town green space was consistent with Hebron's Plan of Conservation and Development. I still support this plan and especially the construction of a new Public Works Facility. Also, a member of the Capital Improvement Committee of four years, I observed firsthand our current Public Works Facility. Our current facility is over 40 years old. Its useful life as an active facility has been exhausted. It is too small to meet our current needs. The existing facility requires hundreds of thousands of dollars of town-owned equipment be stored outside in the elements. This shortens its life and increases taxes on our residents. The current site also violates EPA requirements in terms of wastewater containment and road salt storage. Most importantly, it provides dangerous and substandard working conditions for Hebron's DPW employees. These men and women work day in and day out to maintain our roads and maintain the general infrastructure in Hebron. During snowstorms, hurricanes, and other emergencies, they man their trucks and equipment on a 24/7 basis. The current facility provides no facilities to eat, sleep, clean up, or meet other personal needs for our valued employees. The preliminary plans we approved in 2019 were put together by our Public Building Committee. Contrary to previous public statements, they were put together with 11 years of study and design. They were done with tax dollars spent for consultation of three different professional design firms and our professional town staff. The land search was led by our town planner, who has over 30 years of experience, and 25 parcels were physically walked by the committee and our professional consultants. The preparation and selection of these preliminary plans and the proposed locations were part of a well-planned, well-thought-out, and detailed process to get us where we are today. Hebron is a rural town with many areas of beautiful open space, historical significance, and parcels that are environmentally sensitive. There is no property where one of these traits is not a factor when considering where to build a new DPW. With the options within design and good engineering, all of these factors can be successfully addressed. It is time to move the process forward. I strongly urge the Board of Selectmen, vote to approve the resolution on the agenda tonight so we can proceed with the process of getting more details and questions addressed, as well as more input from the residents of Hebron. Sincerely, Clara M. O'Brien, Amston. And if no one else has a public comment, I think that is it for now. We'll revisit at the end of the meeting if there's anyone else. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Donna. Okay. The next section is our Good to Know, and I think, Andy, you have two things.
We have tonight one thing. Our resident trooper is on a DUI grant, so he just called me a little while ago. But we have a very important person that's going to take up the second spot. It's recognition of Tanya Coles-Daly, our social worker. She's here with us tonight, and along with Sharon Jarred, our senior director. And I think Sharon's going to have a few words about Tanya's achievements.
I just want to congratulate Tanya. She is a fabulous social worker, has worked diligently as a, you know, full-time employee, a mom, to get her doctorate degree without missing a beat. And so I just want to congratulate her.
Nice. Yeah, we're very lucky to have her, and that's a wonderful feat to get that, and we hope she stays with us. Great job. And we hope she stays with us. A great job.
Yes.
Congratulations on your doctorate.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
This is Gail. I would like to say something. I've been the liaison to the Commission on Aging and the Senior Center for quite a few years now. And I've known Tanya ever since she began her employment with us. And I've always thought that this town of Hebron is extraordinarily lucky to have someone of her character working for us. She has empathy for all the people, and I've had to refer several people to her, and they are all complimentary about how she addresses their needs. So, we are very fortunate and very lucky to have Tanya with us.
Did you want to say anything, Tanya?
Um, I just appreciate all the kind words. And yes, getting a doctorate is not for the faint of heart. So, I appreciate. Many days, I come to work very tired and things like that. But I love my work. I love working for the town and for its citizens. So, thank you so much for recognizing me.
Amen. Thank you very, very much. And we are lucky to have you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just want to thank and congratulate Dr. Coles-Daly.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
We have a wonderful team at the Senior Center.
Yes, we do.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you very, very much. Enjoy your holiday.
Thank you. You, too.
Okay. Our next section is our appointments and resignations. And I believe we have a couple of resignations and a couple of appointments. So, our first is from Charles Daniels, resigning his position on the Parks and Recreation Commission effective immediately. The motion is moved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Charles Daniels from the Parks and Recreation Commission with regrets, and we thank him for his many years of dedicated service to the town of Hebron. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witschman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next one is the Open Space Land Acquisition Committee resignation. Excuse me. And again, it's a letter attached from Charles Daniels, resigning his position on the Open Space Land Acquisition Committee effective immediately. And the motion is moved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Charles Daniels from the Open Space Land Acquisition Committee with regret, and thanks for his dedicated service to the town of Hebron. Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none. A call for a vote. John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witschman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next is, we have an appointment. Attached is correspondence from Catherine Litwin, expressing, excuse me, her interest in moving from an alternate to a regular member on the Commission on Aging. And the motion would be to move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Catherine Litwin to a regular member position on the Commission of Aging with a term to expire December 2023. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I would like to just add something, Dan, to that. As the liaison to the Commission on Aging, as I've said, I've seen Catherine Litwin, and we had a meeting again yesterday, and I think she will be an asset to the Commission on Aging. So, I support her appointment.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other comment? Hearing none. John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witschman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. And then, we have a Water Pollution Control Authority appointment. And we have attached is a letter from Benjamin Gilmore, expressing his interest in being appointed to the Water Pollution Control Authority. The motion being moved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Benjamin Gilmore to the Water Pollution Control Authority effective September 10, 2021, for a term to run until December 2022. Any comment?
Chairman Larson, Mr. Gilmore is here at the meeting.
Mr. Gilmore, would you want to make any kind of comment? Mr. Gilmore? I'm not sure if he's on mute or not.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, I know Ben, he took the We Are Hebron course. I think he works for Colchester PCA. I think he'd be a great, great choice.
Okay. Well, moving on. John?
John Collins, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witschman, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Welcome, Mr. Gilmore, and thank you for volunteering. Our next will be Town Manager's Report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we had a busy week, as you can all understand with the storms. But we've been working diligently on appointing a new town planner. So, I hope that we can confirm an appointment at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting. And I've made an offer. After an interview panel, we had three very strong candidates. We had three different interviews. We've narrowed it down to one person, who seems to be very qualified. He was unanimous by the panel. And then, checked his references and dealt with some other people that he worked with. So, I'll be hoping to introduce him at the next meeting, and hopefully the Board of Select won't confirm his appointment, and we'll have his information for you. He just let me know today that he would accept if he's appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So, that was taking up a bit of time. We've been busy with the Chatham Health District. We had a monthly meeting. Talent County is in the red. Colchester has implemented a mask mandate for indoor buildings in their municipality. So, just to let you know. And we've been working with the schools on the startup, which was, it went off without a hitch. At least the elementary schools, I'm not speaking for Mark. Their schools are going to be doing reviews on the SRO at the elementary schools. And we are looking to hire a new Hebron police officer. And presently, right now, we have one that got injured on the job, so he's out, just to give you an update on that. We'll be paving West Street this week. I don't know if anybody's seen or ran into that, so use caution. And when that gets done, hopefully that'll make that a better, smoother ride. We, the town of Hebron, received a letter, you'll see it later on in this packet, to commit funding for the roadwork improvements on Martin Road. The amount of that letter to commit to fund is $2,984. And that's really good news, that we worked very hard to try to get that. That's through our CROG. Kevin Kelly, myself, and Michael Leary spent a lot of time on that. We gave them a lot of inspiration, and it was approved. So, great news. That's adding a lot to our infrastructure and our paving budget. Could use that. So, that's good news for everybody. The EDC is interviewing, they did last night and again tonight, for a marketing firm. That's going well, so hopefully they'll be coming back with us with a recommendation. But they've been busy doing that. And I've been told to ask the Board of Selectmen if they want to set up a date for the Board of Selectmen photo. We have not done that with the COVID. We have a different board. We don't have a picture with this board, so I think we should plan on setting something like that up, as long as everybody's willing. And then, I just want to bring to your attention, it was also going to come up, that the Planning and Zoning Regulations put a temporary mortuary on cannabis establishments, as we had talked previous, at one of the other Selectmen's meetings. I just want to know, they did that, and that went into effect August 30. And that's all I had.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, thank you. That's good news about Martin Road. I actually have had a couple of people asking me if there was any plans to try to do work on Martin Road. And so, this will make those people very happy. So, thank you.
What would, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, Andy, what would be the timing on Martin Road now that that money's approved? How does that fit into your schedule?
I think it would be, I think Kevin's going to try to get all the information filled out for the state and hopefully do it next year.
That's great.
Yeah, with all the criteria you have to follow. It's got to be all new drainage, and he's hoping to get that started next construction season.
Great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Our next will be our old business and part A, response to the climate crisis.
Yeah, so there's, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll jump in quick. There's two parts to this. So, the first one is, we've been working this week with Environmental Systems, and they were going to come and do another PowerPoint today. But we've got some holes in it. We weren't quite ready, so we're going to put it off till the next meeting. I hope that doesn't upset anybody. And I also have been working with the Hebron Green Committee. They were also in attendance for that meeting this week with Caitlin and Michael Harder. And they're with us here tonight also, because the second part, if we could jump into, is the Hebron Green Committee. There's been a recent request to create a new Steering Committee to address environmental issues. And when we went back from the last meeting, we pulled the charge of the Green Committee, and it kind of already gives them that under their preview. So, I would suggest that we work with them, or whoever, try to work with them, and then whatever they come back with, they would bring it to the Board of Selectmen. But that's up to you guys to decide. There's some information there.
I, Dan Larson speaking, I agree. You know, the Green Committee, that's part of, in my estimation, was part of their charge. And I would like to see them continue with that. They've done an incredibly good job. They've worked very, very hard on the recycling efforts. I, my hat's off to them, and I feel that they are the entity that we already have in place that would address this type of issue.
Mr. Chairman, I attended the Green Committee meeting last week, and, you know, I totally agree with that. They are the people that do it. They've done a great job. They did the Sustainability Connecticut Initiative, which was fantastic for the town, and along with the town staff, obviously. But, yeah, I think this is their value.
Mr. Chairman, my short statement on that is, I think they've living up to their charge. And if we added another committee on, we would just have everybody stepping on everybody else's foot. So, I think we just need to continue to support them as they support the town.
Perfect. Peter?
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry, Peter. Do you want to go, Peter?
No, no, go ahead.
I just want to take one second and just say thank you all for the support in this. I'm Caitlin Hershey. I am the Chair of the Hebron Green Committee. You know, we work with you guys pretty closely, and we were recently made aware of this sort of initiative to potentially look into a Steering Committee to really address the climate crisis. You know, since COVID, we're not out in our public full force. You know, we can't do our events like we used to do anymore, and we can't do as much outreach. But we do have a vacancy and two alternative vacancies on the board. So, I know that there are a lot of people that are passionate in town about the climate crisis and some of these other initiatives that really sort of fall under this. And, you know, if the Board of Selectmen does so choose to use the Green Committee in this capacity, I would absolutely urge any residents that are passionate about this, that would love to jump on board and help us out, and really fulfill those shoes on our committee, we would be more than happy to have them on board. I apologize, Peter.
No, thank you.
Your words are more important than mine. And in this regard, I really, the commitment that you make to the community is substantial. And so, thank you for all that you're doing, and thank you for all that you're going to continue to do. So, I fully support what you're doing and look forward to that you'll continue to have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, next would be the Public Works Facility Building Project. And I'm going to read the proposed resolution. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen do hereby determine that, based on extensive studies and research, the location for the proposed public works facility project will be the John Horton property on Kenny Road. Be it further resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorize the town manager and the town staff to refine the plans and budget estimates, and to move forward with planning necessary to bring the public works facility project to be located on the John, or the Horton property on Kenny Road to a referendum vote at the May 3, 2022 budget referendum, or a date to be determined. So, I'm hearing the resolution. I will open it up for discussion. Peter?
Thank you, Chairman. I just, just a minute, I really do support moving this to referendum and support the resolution. I appreciate the concerns that have been expressed, and will continue to be expressed over the coming months. But I think that the confidence that we have, or should have in the building community, the recommendation, the outside sources, the length of time that this project had, we've undergone, and the delays, I think it's time to move it forward to get the public's perspective on the recommendation. And so, I just, in summary, support the resolution and moving it to referendum, and thank the town, and especially the Building Committee, who continues to, over the years, to demonstrate a significant impact, positive impact, and the quality of the work that they do is to continue to be commended. So, thank you.
Okay. Mark?
I completely agree with Peter, and would just add to that. Thank you for the perseverance of the Building Committee. Richard, you in particular, for sticking with this for 11 years. It seems to be a misconception or a misnomer that this has been rushed, that the appropriate engineers and knowledgeable people aren't involved in making this decision, which they have been. And I think that's been proven. I also agree with Peter that no one's going to be completely happy, and there needs to be precautions put and there needs to be precautions put in place to make sure that groundwater isn't polluted, that the access road doesn't disrupt people's neighborhood or is so close to people's houses that it's impactful to them and their families. So I trust that those things are going to be considered and worked out. But I think this needs to go to the public and they need to decide. And I trust that the powers that be, that are smarter than any selectmen and engineers and environmental people will see that this gets done correctly.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Who, I'm sorry?
John Collins.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Lanza, could I have my notes? Mr. Chairman, I have a short, short, to keep me, keep me short. I put together my notes and I, I will be as brief as possible. That's the, not the first slide, but that's fine. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, everybody, for coming. This is a consequential and historic decision for a town. I don't think I'm smarter than anybody else. I don't think I have the right, right, necessarily have the right opinion or anything. I do have an opinion and I have a responsibility as a selectman to provide that opinion. And I've gone door to door in the neighborhood to see, to tell people that this is, this decision is coming for them. Kenny Road, Church Street, Mill Stream. And let me tell you something, nobody knows that this is happening. Or if they don't know, they don't know the extent of what's going to happen to them. And so I think it's important that our citizens know what's going to happen. I should also say that every person that I talked to when they heard about it was against it and shocked. And I guess a little bit disappointed in the town because they didn't know. So my role as a, as a, as a selectman, having been elected, is to take the information that I know. Most people don't know. We have 10,000 people, 9,000 people now in the town. They don't know what goes on in the town. They rely on the selectmen to make good decisions and to express their opinions. And that's how it works in a democracy. Express your opinions and then vote on it. And I hope that's what we're going to do here and I hope we do that in the referendum. And whichever way it goes, fine, but everybody should be able to express their opinions. And as you've seen, there's, there's already, I think, significant opposition to this. So better, faster, cheaper, build, build the new Public Works Facility at the existing site on Old Colchester Road. I spent, I don't know how much time, looking at all of the information. I think it was like five pounds of information going back 11 years. And I came up with some conclusions. I talked with construction companies. I talked with the state soil scientist. I talked with wetland scientists. And you know, I have a PhD in soil science, so that was interesting to me. I've forgotten most of what I learned, but, but the first thing I want to say is that locating the DPW facility on the Horton property is a bad idea of historic consequence. Yes, we do need a new DPW facility, we had an improved one. But that doesn't mean it has to be at the Horton property. It's too near town. It's, this is an industrial type operation that will change the nature of the downtown forever and for worse. It's not on an arterial road. I went through, you know, other peoples, other towns, majorities and how they decided. And one of the most important thing was to be on an arterial road. This is inside a complex that gets onto a country road that goes down to a stop sign and then gets on an arterial road. It's going to impact Hebron Elementary School, trucks. Of course, we have additional buildings that are coming, the fire department. So we're going to have more trucks, ambulances, more traffic in the morning, which is already a disaster. And I think it's going to create a more unsafe environment. I was on Church Street going door to door and it's a scary thing to walk along there. It's, it's, it's a very, it's a dangerous road. Yes, high value, high functional wetlands will be impacted there. One thing that the selection committee did not do was segregate or evaluate the difference between highly functional wetlands and low functional wetlands. And I'll get into that more. And that's critical to this decision-making. On Horton property, there are highly functional and important wetlands. Obviously exiting on Kenny will impact the neighborhoods on Kenny, Mill Stream, Church, Hebron Elementary School and the downtown area. Never mind Hope Valley, which is a large and critical road in the area. It severs the connection between the Raymond Preserve and Arrow, the downtown and Raymond Preserve and Airline Trail, which is important economically and aesthetically. I mean, the whole, one of the whole things about this town right now is to have these, these, the connection between the downtown so we can have people coming here to enjoy the rural atmosphere of this town. That's why people come here. If we, if we do this now, the DPW now, we're going to, if we, there's going to be a co-location of other additional buildings because nobody else is going to want to invest there. Who's going to invest in a, in a, in an area adjacent to a DPW facility? And anyways, those plans are already in place and we know it's going to happen. What we should be doing is growing organically and slowly into a rustic and charming village for everybody. That's what the surveys that we conducted said. They, people love this town because it's rural and it's, it's a beautiful town. And this is, does not achieve that. And finally, it will change the nature of Hebron. Next slide, please. So if you go to the CRT, the Environmental Review of this area, they, from 2000, June 2000, what they say about the Horton property, the proposed business expansion area appears to possess moderate to high archaeological sensitivity to prehistoric, historic and industrial archaeological resources. And due to the fact that these wetlands exist upstream of the Raymond Brook Marshes, which are a special concern because of their role in providing critical salmon habitat, salmon, salmon habitat, maintaining their ability to improve water quality and maintain water quantity should be a prime consideration. And of course, the farmland, it's prime designated prime farmland. So the Horton property is a special, special place and Mr. Tulamari is exactly right. It is where the town began when Europeans came here. It is that farmland and the farmland land at Raymond Preserve that was first farmed for this town. Next. So what's being proposed? You see this, this, this scheme and you see that there's a road that does go to Horton Boulevard, which means that right there, that's, those are high functional wetlands that will be filled. But you see how close it is to town. We have no noise studies that, that suggest that this isn't going to be a noisy facility. You see, as we go down the road there, it exits out to Kenny, which is a very, very small road. On the left there, you see the lawn, the great lawn that they're proposing. And who in their, who is going to go to a great lawn across the street from a DPW facility? I just don't see how we're going to have organic development when that is our, our anchor facility. Next facility, next slide. And this is, this is the proposed master plan. You see that as, as you go down the road towards Kenny, that prime farmland is also going to be occupied by the fire department, by a new town hall. So the entire acreage is going to be a town complex. Again, it's going to block any kind of, any kind of movement of people from downtown to our Raymond Preserve and the Airline Trail. Okay, next slide. So why did, I want to, you know, make some corrections, I think, as to, you know, why we, what people have been saying in the public about why we bought the Horton property in 2019. In fact, the Village Green Plan was at a standstill. There were no investors buying the available property. There was the road to nowhere, which is still there, except for it goes to the Lawrence Senior Facility. And we had the opportunity to buy this land cheaply. We bought it for $440,000, the non-wetland part, open space, bought the other part. The idea was land adjacent to the town center is extremely valuable and planning. We would have control of, of that land so that we could decide how the town would grow for generations to come. So a recent survey of town residents say they like Hebron because what? 80% said the rural character and closeness to nature. Of course, schools and low crime are very important. I just think the future of the Horton property and the town should take the views of its citizens into consideration. Next slide, please. The town did not buy the property specifically to build a municipal complex. The 2019 vote to buy the land did not include a statement. And taxpayers are also agreeing to build an expensive municipal complex on this land. That's why there will be a new vote to determine that. And that's what democracy is all about. You know, we'll see which way it goes, but there's, there's no contradiction there. This is what Andy said about, at the July 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. These are, these are approved minutes. Andy Tierney clarified that the purchase of the parcel is not a guarantee of a facility, but it was something to be considered at the time of the purchase as future option. And I want to clarify, I said at the time that I was voting for the acquisition because it was good for the town, but that I opposed building a municipal complex on this land. And that was verified in email from Sloan's Rooster to me two days ago. It's been very clear, I've always opposed municipal complex on this land. I think it's, it's a terrible, I mean, a historic mistake, a shot in the foot for this town to do this. Next. So we were talking about the process. I think there was mission confusion. As I go in through the emails that were provided, there were good practical plans for a DPW facility on the existing Old Colchester Road transfer stations on that site years ago. And they were examined. However, at some point, the Board of Selectmen started talking about additional buildings. And so the consultants started talking about a municipal complex that included additional buildings. And so this idea of a need for expansion, a larger area came in and confused the DPW search. So the search for the better DPW building was replaced by a grander vision of a municipal complex, which complicated and prolonged the process and pointed the selection to the Horton property. We could have had that facility at the Old Colchester site five, six years ago. And we should have because it's, it's, it does have a lot of problems with it right now and the workers do have a right to be safe. Next. The original DPW proposal is the best proposal. They're viable. There are plans to have a single level DPW building by acquiring cheap ever source land adjacent to the transfer station. There is 2.35 acres of upland right there. It is absolutely an upland, upland soil. It's classified that way and it's cheap. And they'll, they'll give it to us, I'll bet. You can do either a multi-level or a single level, both work. Should also say that the mined soil, there's, there's 32 acres there that we could, we could acquire. Part of it has been, were upland soils that were mined for sand. There was a, a determination by a wetland scientist that at least some of that land was wetland. I looked at that land from, from, from the, from the road and I'm pretty confident that more than, than, well, it's not all wetland soil. And there's acreage that's close to the transfer station that would not be classified under current guidance as, as wetland soil by Connecticut DEP. So I think that ought to be looked at, but even without that, you could, we know that we have 2.35 acres that we can work with. Now, if you wanted to build, you know, a supporting satellite facility at Burton Hill Park or someplace, that might work. Or acquire something else in northern part of, part of the, the town, like parcel 3310 on Route 85 across from Martin Road. I'm not saying that we should, but if, if it was deemed necessary or a good thing by, you know, Department of Public Works or, or, I'm open to that. I think that might, I think that might be a good thing. And, you know, the, the previous citizen opposition at Burn Hill might be mitigated by the fact that it's a small, a small facility or a small administrative facility. There wouldn't, the impact would be much less. Next slide, please. So like I said, the acquisition of ever sourced property near Old Colchester Road. If you look at Alternative A, there's a triangle there, all upland, absolutely well-drained, upland soil, classified as an upland soil. If you look at the other part, that's probably wetland soil. But let me get to the, the idea that this is a low function wetland. It is a human created wetland. It's not a natural wetland. And so the idea of manipulating it would be much better if you had to, than going over to Horton, the Horton property, which is a beautiful, natural wetland that is, that is actually has function and value, which again is so important in wetland studies. Next, next slide. And this was supported, the idea of, of another, of two facilities was supported in 2013, 2015 by, you know, the building committee. So this is from, I think, Wayne. In regards to the DPW, it's consent of the committee that the solution should be split between Old Colchester Road and Burton Hill Park. Chairman Warwick noted that this plan had a number of positive attributes. No new land would be acquired, the Burton Hill Park, Burton Hill Park infrastructure is already in place. I would probably change it. They were talking about making the main facility at Old Culture, I mean, at Burton Hill Park. I'd make a smaller facility at Burton Hill Park. If you were going to do it, you don't have to, but if you were going to do it. And Fitzpatrick, also a member of the committee, added Burton Hill's already developed with roadways and buildings. So the addition of DPW facility would be a natural expansion of type of operation currently underway there. So I, I think it's very possible that a smaller plan would be more acceptable to the neighbors. Next slide, please. What happened with the site selection process? I think it was flawed and lack focus from the beginning. But certainly, it certainly was altered when, when it started looking at this as a municipal complex instead of just a DPW facility. The site selection criteria were not identified. I went, as I said, I went through other, other towns and cities that have gone through this. They identify criteria and so they can compare each site against that set criteria. That wasn't done here. They also have community outreach in which people buy into the selection process. That wasn't done here. I think the committee sought a perfect engineering solution, which, you know, maybe Horton is a perfect engineering solution. It's flat, but it may not be the best, the best solution for the town. Now, they did not take into consideration for sure, social value, neighborhoods, traffic, environmental, historic properties and economic sustainability. There, when you go through the list of people that they have that, you know, worked on this for 10 years, that's not there. I should say, you know, I read in the paper that a member said that, that the complex would be a, the best environmental steward for the Horton property. If we had an actual environmental study, we would show that to be contrary. It would not, that's so not true. I, you know, I, I, yeah, anyways. So I think also early on the process became politicized, which diminished its usefulness. And we should have had a professional consultant specializing in public building site selection doing this. Because it was an important task and this is, this is for the future of our town. And, you know, I love the building committee. I think they did a great job on, on, on the school, the lead. I think, you know, I, when they come with, with their, their corrections to the, the library, we're going to be spending more than a half a million dollars on a roof, I'm with you. But I don't think you're experts on this. This is site selection and that's a whole different discipline. Next. So I keep on hearing like requirements, DPW needs to be near the city center. And so I went through and looked at all the towns around us and in Connecticut, I looked at. And, you know, I grew up in Glastonbury, I know where the DPW facility is. It's miles from the city center. And Woodstock, you know, you visited Woodstock, that's miles from the city center. And, and I calculate, I think I looked at like 30 towns. The average distance is about three miles. So you may want to be near the city center, but you want to be on an arterial road or a highway. And you want to have it on industrial property, not, you know, not in the, in the center of town where you might have development. So the DPW facilities that were located near the city center were located on industrial land, near a main arterial road or a highway, away from the business. near a main artillery road or a highway away from the business district. Few, I don't know if any, few towns locate their DPW facility in the middle of town. And it's for obvious reasons. That's where your economic development is. Next. Second one, we need to plan for 50 years of possible expansion. Well, there is a, there is an assumption in this, in the report that population grew from 2010 to 2020, to 10,130. In fact, latest census, according to the current, says, say, we decrease by 6% to 9,098. So we are not growing. In fact, we're contracting. Second, COVID's changed town planning. We should, we should think about that. How is our economy going to change with COVID? There's more remote conferencing, internet and less need for in-person town services. You know, my bugaboo, we should be outsourcing more DPW services. I won't go on on that. But another constraint to growth, there is not enough groundwater to support future growth here. It's well-known in the 66 corridor, you know, from, from Middletown all the way past us. We have geological constraints. We just don't have water. And we have had, we have had a number of times when we didn't have water. So I think it's a folly to plan for 50 years of expansion, especially if the existing trends are for decreasing population. And I think the assumptions and the conclusions of the Municipal Facilities Report from 2010, which is driving this municipal complex idea, they don't, they no longer apply. Next. So I think the best and most viable option for Hebron, we could build it now, cheaper. We could eliminate the safety problems that we have there. And it would be a better facility because it's, it's already been proven, you know, over years, I guess 40 years, that that's a good site. You know, there hasn't been problems. So we can, you know, there's options to buy additional land that would help. There's options to have a smaller satellite structure or facility at Burn Hill Park or someplace else. That's fine. That's good. Not necessary. But as I said, if not at Burton Hill Park, there's a parcel on Route 85 that's flat. It does have good, the Building Committee said it didn't have good buffer from Gilliard Hill School. It does. And if it was a small facility, you wouldn't worry about that. But it's about the same distance from that land to Gilliard Hill that the Horton proposal is Hebron Elementary School. So I don't know what was going on there. So if we don't, you know, find, if those two don't work out, the reduced site selection criteria means that we probably can find a smaller satellite supporting facility that can help in the services with Old Colchester Road. So I just want to say at the end, you know, I think I'm for a referendum, absolutely, immediate. I'm with, I'm with Mr. Stewart, although I don't agree with what the other stuff he said, but I'm with him. Yeah, we should have, we should have a referendum. And I think this is being rushed because, you know, again, there's an emergency. There's no emergency. This isn't going to happen until 2024 or something. Why are we voting on it now? I mean, I know the residents don't even know about it. Most of Hebron doesn't know about it. I would prefer to table this for, to allow the residents to learn about it and to come and speak to us and see what they feel. Because right now, nobody knows about it. At least, I mean, the people that certainly should know about the neighbors, from what I gathered, don't know about it. And I don't think they'll be happy about it. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for your forbearance.
You're welcome. Thank you. Gail. You're on mute. You're on mute.
I didn't want my static to interfere with John, so I'm off mute now. I think we need to move to a referendum. This has been going on for 11 years. We have a dire need for a facility. It's up to, at this point, not to us, the Board of Selectmen, but up to the townspeople. It would fall on us to make sure that the townspeople are acquainted with what they're being asked to vote on, so that they see all sides of the equation. But I think we need to go, we need to move this question forward. So that's my, that's my two cents. Let's move, let's move the question.
Okay. Okay. Well, with the question being moved, we will have a vote on that. That will end all discussion if moving the question passes. Okay. Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
John Collins, no.
Gail?
Gail Witschman, aye.
And myself, aye. The question has been moved. This next vote is to accept the resolution as stated. Again, going across, John?
John Collins, no.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witschman, aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries four to one. Thank you all. And I will have my comments later because motion was called. Okay. Our next is, I believe, to call for a moderator and an alternate moderator for the September 30th, 2021 special town meeting. As a basis for this, at the August 19th, 2021 meeting, the Board of Selectmen scheduled a special town meeting for September 30th, 2021 to consider and act on acquisition of the Moran property and the Bernstein property and to approve a supplemental appropriation to the debt management fund. The motion is as follows. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the call for the September 30th, 2021 special town meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM as attached. And further, be it further resolved that the moderator for the meeting will be Scott Kaufman and the alternate moderator for the meeting will be Kevin Connors. With that, I will read the legal notice. The electors and voters of the town of Hebron are hereby given notice and warned that a special town meeting will be convened on Thursday, September 30th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the community room at the Douglas Library of Hebron, 22 Main Street, Hebron, Connecticut, to consider and act upon the following resolutions. One, in accordance with Hebron Town Charter, Section 303(c), to consider the acquisition by donation of the Moran property and approximately 4.4-acre parcel of land located off Crouch Road abutting the Colchester spur of the airline trail for open space purposes. Two, in accordance with the Hebron Town Charter, Section 303(c) and Town Code, Chapter 42, Article 2, Section 42-8, to consider the acquisition of the Bernstein property and approximately 215.5-acre parcel of land located on Old Colchester Road in the amount of $499,900, funding to come from DEEP OSWA grant of $199,960 and from the Land Acquisition Fund of $299,940. And three, in accordance with Hebron Town Charter, Section 304(b), to consider a supplemental appropriation from the unassigned fund balance in the amount of $1 million to the Debt Management Fund. This was dated at Hebron, Connecticut, the second day of September 2021. So hearing the legal notice and the proposed resolution, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter, try it again.
Peter Casper, aye.
Thank you. Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witschman, aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. Our next is to adopt the resolution for Affordable Housing Planning Grant and the discussion of an Affordable Housing Plan Working Group. So I will read the resolution and then we can open it up for comment. And I'll just start out by saying the town of Hebron has been notified of award of the $15,000 Affordable Housing Plan Technical Assistance Grant from the State of Connecticut Department of Housing. Attached is the grant award letter and the notice of grant award. The current resolution is required to finalize acceptance of the grant. The town budgeted $20,000 for this project in the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. $5,000 will be the town's share. The resolution is as follows. Be it resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen to accept the State of Connecticut Department of Housing Affordable Housing Plan Grant Technical Assistance Program, round three, in the amount of $15,000. Be it further resolved that Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, is authorized to sign the notice of grant award and any other necessary documents. The next step in this process will be to establish an Affordable Housing Plan Working Group and to select a consultant to work with the town based on responses received from the RFP currently out to proposals. So discussion on this.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in for all the selectmen?
Yes, please.
So as far as establishing the group, I stated earlier that we had just made an offer to a new town planner. The person that, that was selected, if appointed by the Board of Selectmen, has experience in writing these plans. So I would hope maybe we could just hold off a little bit about putting the group together or come up with some ideas and meet with him to see what he thinks, seeing he's done, I think, three of these already. We have the RFP out for the consultant, but I don't think you have to make a decision on the group tonight, is what I'm trying to suggest.
Dan Larson, I completely and totally agree. I feel that it would be best that we can get the consultant on board. I read through this entire packet. I was involved back when we were doing the charrettes. A lot of the information contained within that charrette is good and useful information, but it is outdated. I feel that the consultant, once on board, would be able to piece together and be able to put together all of this type of documentation so that the group would then have a basis to start their work from. Also, I think that it's important that we get out to the people of the town a lot of what our responsibilities statutorily are as written and mandated by the state. I don't think people really have any idea of a lot of the types of housing requirements the state is putting on the different towns. You know, the affordable housing plans. And I think it's important that people realize some of the constraints and some of the obligations that we are going to be subjected to. And I think it's also important at some point in time that we get out information to the people, some of the things that are actually being done to help attain that 10% housing level. So I'll be quiet. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none? All in favor of the resolution, please state by saying aye. John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witschman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Our next approve the commitment to fund and accept the grant awarded through the LOWCIP for roadway improvements to Martin Road. And I know Andy had mentioned it a little bit earlier. Did you want to get into this, Andy?
Well, once again, I think this is a great thing for the town of Hebron. It's a lot of money and it adds one of our major roads to bring it up to a brand-new structure. So we were able to do a lot of other roadwork with some bonding money and of course, what was in the budget in our CIP. But this is a big boost in the arm for Hebron. That's a cut through from Marlboro over to Hebron and it's used quite a bit. So to have that funded with this kind of money is a huge economic benefit.
I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen hereby accept the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program grant awarded through the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program, otherwise known as LOWCIP, for roadway improvements to Martin Road and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to sign the commitment to fund dated August 30th, 2021 in the amount of $2,984,400. Be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to sign any other documents related to this LOWCIP grant, including the Project Authorization Letter, PAL, to be issued pursuant to the Master Municipal Agreement for construction projects. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Witschman, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Next, any other old business? None got brought up. So moving on to new business. Our next meeting will be September 16th, Thursday. And so again, anyone that has anything else that they want to get added to that agenda, please get that into the town offices, the town hall. Excuse me. Do we have any other new business? Okay, hearing none? We have our consent agenda items. We have our consent agenda items. And before I put this out of the way, these are items to be considered routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And we have the approval of the minutes of August 19, 2021, regular meeting, and that was posted in our emails, and then the tax refund. So, opening that up. Does anybody have any changes, additions, deletions, or issues?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. John, we often see the Toyota Lease Trust refunds.
Yes.
Who is that?
These are, Andy, I don't know if you wanted to jump in on this?
Yeah, I believe it's a leasing company, but I think Donna's trying to say something.
That's exactly what I was going to say. It is a leasing company.
Yeah.
Makes you want to become a leasing company, huh?
Yeah, good business.
Yeah, I was going to say, these companies, and I don't know how this all gets decided, but this is, this has been a common practice for literally years. So, if no other questions, all those in favor of the consent agenda items and the tax refunds as listed, please signify by saying aye. John?
John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Wismann, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Next would be our liaison reports. Going down the list, Mark?
Well, school is back in session. The anti-maskers were using their kids to prove a point by telling their kids not to wear masks and see how the school was going to respond to that. It's continuing to be a problem. Otherwise, traffic is still an issue and everybody's doing the best they can.
Thank you. Gail?
Okay, the Commission on Aging Senior Center, we met yesterday morning. In-person classes are going on. Exercise equipment is going, the youth is going strong. Winter Housing Assistance, people might want to know about. The applications are being corrected now. And open enrollment is going to be going on. So, anybody who has any questions or concerns, they should go call the Senior Center and make an appointment. The Douglas Library, we will meet this coming Monday, but they've received a grant from the Hebron, this might have been mentioned before, from the Hebron Greater Together Community to present programs exploring racism, white supremacy, and equity issues. And as we are now September, a public survey is out there asking for your opinions about library, what you want from the library, the usage and the like. So, you can find that survey out on the website. And the Hebron Board of Ed, masks are in effect until September 30 at this point, and they meet again in two weeks. And that's my report.
Thank you. Peter?
Well, the Parks and Rec Commission and Board of Finance met last week, and I'll be brief, but just bear with me as I look at my notes. The Board of Finance definitely had discussions about the potential DPW project and interested in updates on costs and engineering costs and things like that. The audit for 2020-2021 has started. The deficiencies of the findings of 2019 to 2020 audit were discussed. There were nine of them, six of them have been completed, the seventh will be done. The last couple won't be done, but the audit firm recognizes that they're in process, so there shouldn't be any issues with that. Some quick discussion and question on the COVID money from town, there's still no update from the state, so we have that money that still needs to be addressed, and 1.4 million or so. The, yeah, talked about the debt management, the turf project, and that's probably about it. The Parks and Rec Commission, Craig Bryant, the new director there, seems to be off to a strong start. Updates consisted of Hebron Day, about 500 people attended. They had, I guess, a new kids zone, which was a big hit, 56 vendors. So, the continued overall success, you know, continue, it'll continue, and he's really working on how to improve attendance and some vendors that show up and pay and then don't show up. You have 11 vendors actually pay and not show up. So, a couple of things that he's trying to problem solve, but overall considered that a continued success. One of the issues that has come up before is moving it to mid-June to get better attendance. So, that could be something that you might see come up. There was a discussion on the farmer's market, considered the third season of that, and had five sessions for that, and there was some good feedback, and that looks like that's something that's going to continue, a lot of positive feedback on that. Program update, as they always do, talked about the Raymond Brook Preserve and the bridge, finishing up prior to, I guess, 10-1 with the, some of the outstanding minor items to be cleared up there. I think Andy's discussed that in, I think, the last meeting. You heard Charles, the Charles Daniels resignation, but there's two openings on the Parks and Rec Commission, and so obviously, if anyone knows, interested in that, we discussed that. And I guess the Lions, they mentioned the Lions doing the Christmas lights, like the bright lights, so that, I think, might be something new, but they talked about that as well. So, that's my update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yeah, I think we talked about the EDC's interview, interviews, and also the Green Committee's designation as the Climate Crisis Committee. I just want to say to Andy in the town, the bridge is fabulous. The bridge at Raymond Preserve, going all the way out, it's really, really something. And people on the trail that have seen it, they love it. It's just a great piece of property.
Myself, really, I don't have anything on my committee's, Fire Department meets next week. The Peters House did have an open house during the Hebron Day. There were, there were a number of people that went in, and a lot of people are very impressed with, with what's happening in there. It was sad that we had an impending major storm coming that weekend, and thankfully it, it did not develop into what it could have been. So, I think we all kind of dodged a bullet on that. The other thing, even though it's not within my jurisdiction, is we do have Saturday, and I don't have the paperwork in front of me, I want to say 10 o'clock, the dedication of the Pollinator Garden, and that's going to be at the Millstream site, that parking area there. So, that's a great thing. They've done a lot of great work, again, doing plantings and all that help a lot of our smaller creatures of our, of our planet. So, that'll be, should be a great thing. So, hopefully people will show up for that. They've done an incredible job. I think that's it. Our next thing would be public comment.
Doesn't Andy have a couple, isn't Andy on a couple, doesn't he have an update or no?
Andy, yes, actually we should, yes, you are correct. I apologize.
That's okay. Just a couple, WPCA sends out their monthly, oh, sorry, their weekly minutes for their job meetings. They're still waiting for some of the materials, but they're, they're going to get started shortly. The contractors are getting everything ready to get going. So, Kevin sent something to me this week, I can forward that update from Thurland Montgomery out to the Board of Selectmen, so you guys have that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Gail. I know I mentioned when I gave my Douglas Library update, but I don't think I emphasized enough that the library has a strategic committee and, which myself and Donna and a few other people are on. We're doing the survey, and I mentioned the survey, but I think I need to emphasize to the public that's watching that that survey is important for everyone in town to fill out, to let us know what you think of the services for the library, what you like, what you do not like, what you would like to see, so forth and so on. So, I just wanted to interrupt and add that in with a little more emphasis than I gave it before.
Thank you. Donna?
Yes, we do have a couple of public comments. The first one is Mary Rose Mead. Here we go.
Yes, hi, thank you. First, I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen. In 29-plus years here in Hebron, I've seen us have conflicts and disagreements, and there's always been, we've been spared sort of partisan division, and I'm particularly grateful to all of you for your service because these are, meetings are long, and these are your, you're volunteering to do this. So, I appreciated this, and I also appreciate your willingness to listen to each other and to listen to all of us. Dan Larson, I recall, I think it was 1993, a really contentious budget vote for Region 8, and we went to the wire, and it was your, it was your level-headed willingness to collaborate and lead people that got the budget passed. So, I know that we have the capacity as a town to listen to each other and to try to make things work out for everyone. With, with regard to the development of the public worksite, again, I'm not, I'm not, you know, looking to put a wrench in the wheels and progress, but I'm going to ask two things of the Board of Selectmen, and the first is that you create an opportunity to meet with the people most impacted, which would be anybody that's living on Kenny Road where any kind of an exit would come out. I don't think it's a good idea to bring public works vehicles out onto a narrow residential road like Kenny Road, and I, and I don't think it's good to have an impact on residential area. And maybe there's another way that you can make an exit in some other location that's not going to have an impact as much, but at the very least, would you consider talking with the people that live on the road and guaranteeing some level of comfort about what the project is going to look like? I've seen preliminary drawings and, but maybe giving people an idea of what it is it will look like. The other piece is really important, and I don't want to say this now, and I hope everybody that is in a position to make this decision and move this forward is listening carefully and looking down the line. Those who cannot remember history are condemned to repeat it. However many years ago that that land was going to be developed and they wanted to put a traffic light at the intersection of Kenny and Church, it was clear that they needed to widen the road and extend the lines for, I believe it was the electric company. In order to make that project go forward, we would have had to grant like 15 feet to the electric company. We, we live about 20 feet from the road or 25. We're not willing to do that. I mean, that's a huge quality of life issue for us, for our family. We've had people already come off the road into our property, slide off into our driveway, run over our trees. And so, you know, it's something that has to be looked at before you have this whole plan and bring it to the town. You need to know that there are things that have to be in place in order to do it, and if it means that you're going to come and say to us, hey, will you give us 15 feet of your frontage? No, we can't do that. It's, it's absolutely would have a tremendous negative impact to our property, to our, our quality of life. So, I just hope that you're looking at that now, instead of getting everything coming through and then at the last minute saying, oh, by, oh, we just noticed, we need this. Because I don't want to be the person responsible for putting a wrench into things, but I'm hoping that you're thinking everything through to the end, and again, taking a lot of consideration into the residential areas that would be impacted. If there's another way to draw this plan to maybe bring a second egress out to 85 instead of taking it to Kenny, that might resolve all kinds of issues. But I just wanted to put that out there so that, so that you're thinking about this and it doesn't become a surprise. But thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Kevin Tula Mary also has a comment.
Yes, thank you. Hi. I have to say I'm disappointed but not surprised, but I do have a couple of questions for you guys, and I would really appreciate some answers tonight, and I know that my neighbors on Kenny Road would as well. And briefly, if each of you that voted to approve this referendum in that particular language, why wouldn't you pursue options not specific for Kenny Road before sending it to referendum? I don't understand that. And then part two, please explain how this plan does not violate the plan of conservation and development. To me, that is a simple reading and simple language that directs the Board of Selectmen to act responsible in situations like this, and you have chosen to ignore it. So, I would really appreciate some answers. Hello? Yeah? Is my mic working?
It is, it, yes. For a while, it's not, but it's going in and out.
I just addressed the.
All right, I will try again briefly.
No, I, I, I heard it. You want answers, I don't know that there are answers right. This is John Collins. I do want to say something, Mary Rose, there's not a chance that there's going to be egress on 85. That's, that's the wetlands that was purchased by the Open Space Committee, and it's, those are high-functional wetlands, they're, they're not going to, I don't see how that could ever happen. And then you talked about egress to Millstream, I don't see how that could happen either. You could have, I guess, out toward the Main Street, but I don't, I don't know that that big facility is going to, going to like it either, so. Mr. Chairman, could, could one of the majority speak to Kevin's comments? He has questions.
If you want me to speak to him, I can. We don't normally do that under public comment. He could send his questions to the Town Manager, and I would gladly give you written documents back to best answer those unless the Board of Selectmen want to do it tonight.
It, to be fair to all, I, I feel that would be best. You know, please get your, your questions, comments into the town, and all of these, all of these questions, all these comments, all these thoughts are going to be addressed.
It's, no, it's a simple question, and it's not for Mr. Tierney, thank you very much. It's for the people that voted to send this to referendum. Explain to me why this is not a violation of the plan of conservation and development.
As I say, sir. This is a section for public comment, this isn't a section for public debate, so I would agree that that, those questions Mr. Tierney could put answered, but this is not, this section of the agenda is not intended for this type of exchange.
Okay, may I meet with all of you in the majority that voted for this to get an explanation?
Yes, but I'm not sure when.
That's, okay, thank you. Thank you. That's, okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments?
Are there any other public comments? There aren't none, none indicated here at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Gail?
If there's no other business, then I would make a motion that we adjourn at 8:51.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Have a great and safe holiday weekend, and we'll see you at the fair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.